This time I'd like to call the meeting of the Harden County Board of Education to order. And we'll start off with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, board commits.
You got those?
I got it.
All right.
To improve our effectiveness, the Harden County Schools Board team commits to keep children first, listen, be prepared, be professional, demonstrate financial stewardship, represent the entire district and support district goals, and support board decisions.
All right, thank you. Recognitions, uh, number one, John, thank you. Focus on academics. Mr. Sutton, you got anything you want to?
No, sir, that's not my rule.
All right. And no visitors wanted to speak tonight. Construction updates, we had some construction updates today at our noon meeting and buildings are progressing right along a little bit behind and I don't think we're quite sure if we're going to be able to meet the dates that we wanted, but anyway, continue on and push to get the students in those new schools as quick as we can, although we want to try to have them 100% complete. Kay's got something she wants to bring up on the consent agenda. I think maybe she voted for the purchase of this thing and I'm not sure.
I'll let you tell the story, Kathy. No, no, it is item, um, what is it, nine?
Six.
C six. The approval to declare the trailer at J.T. Alton surplus. When I was a freshman in high school, I had a geography class in a trailer at North Harden High School. Charlie, I bet you had classes in them too, no?
No.
Well, I did. So that's how long.
Really?
That's at least how long we've had trailers in this district. And we had to do that because we did not have enough building space to house all the students. And when we had an increase in enrollment, we didn't have enough money to build new buildings prior to carry on. So we bought these trailers and they were awful. I'm just going to be honest, they were awful. They were not shaped conducive to make a decent classroom and they were hot, they were cold, they were just awful. And they didn't, you know, it wasn't very many years before they began to deteriorate greatly and then they got really shabby. So I am just so pleased that we are finally getting rid of those things and I pray to God we never have to buy another one.
Here, 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 here.
So that's, that's what I wanted to say about that.
I, I was in trailers for a couple of classes in, at Sonora Elementary, so, and they were brand new and then they were shabby and it was a quick transformation, so, and they were cold and they were hot and they smelled like formaldehyde and it was not a good experience.
It was not a good experience and it was very unfortunate that we had to put students in those things for as long as we did, but there wasn't anything we could do about it. It was the only way we could house them.
It would, it'd be a hard decision to go back to that unless it was a emergency need of a blown building or something, you know, you had to, and then I would hope it would just be a lease situation until the new building was put up, but we're very fortunate here in Harden County. I, you know, we, we have nice schools and some people says that we spend too much money on schools. We talked today in a construction meeting about 250,000 concrete block. Is that right, John? He said quarter million, I believe.
Really?
250,000 concrete block in one of the schools down there.
East Harden.
You know, we, we could have chosen not to have the concrete block structure, uh, which hopefully is safer, more fireproof, uh, just totally safer than a metal built or especially a wood-studded type structure. So I guess for the people out there that, you know, don't like some of the expenditure we're doing, at least we're doing it the safe, right way and, uh...
Well, you know, I think if you do any research on the impact of environment on learning, you will find that it has a great deal of impact and it's important. And I think we need to have nice places for kids to go and learn.
I agree. We want them to want to show up and we want to be able to have, show them to staff and want them to come here to work.
That's right.
And that helps the local economy because we have, well, you know, well-trained people ready to enter life, so it pays off.
So as we're speaking about that, we're, uh, got approval of a BG two and three, uh, design and development documents for Central Harden renovation project, which, uh, hopefully we'll have the other schools in before we get into any construction on that, but we are moving forward with renovation. Part of that building is getting quite old and it don't meet the guidelines that's recommended now for our school. And we had a $4,000 donation for Chromebooks that was anonymous from, uh, a family and we appreciate that. Uh, they chose to be anonymous, but I think they said Chromebooks are about $250 apiece and so they'll buy a few Chromebooks for some needy.
I think I figured about 16.
Families.
That's good.
Thank you.
So we appreciate that. We'll take any donations anyone likes to give us and accept them however they want, either anonymous or be glad to say who it's from, so. John, if you want to kick in, you know, your retirement will...
I would consider that, that recommendation, thank you.
I wondered if we have any more information on the classified evaluation form. Did you, were you able to find out anything about that?
No, you, um, the classified evaluation form, um, we will run that through legal before.
Okay, okay.
We make sure, but no, I was not able to do that today.
And we're approving school-wide fundraisers for next year, or this year and our next year.
So I think you could vote on the consent agenda. I did want to, if I may, uh, the West Point, uh, part of, on here, the West Point voters will be, uh, part of, uh, Division Five precinct. So we want to make sure West Point voters know to be registered to vote so that, uh, when it comes, comes time for a board election, that they have their voice heard. So we just want to make sure the West Point voters know that they are going to be in the fifth precinct, uh, of the board elections.
Division Five, who is that?
Yes, uh, that would be Ms. Johnson's.
Oh, okay.
So are we going to pull out, uh, item D three? Is it already out and just not on the, D three was approval of the new classified evaluation form?
I would recommend you approve it with the approval of, uh, that our attorney approves of it.
He may not even remember telling us.
If you're, if you're okay with that.
We'll approve it and then if the board attorney don't get things worked out, well...
We'll make changes, gotcha. Thanks, sir, appreciate the classification.
You want anything else? Not?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. All favors, second by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, table's no, uh...
And I'll explain my vote. I'm voting no because of item, uh, C seven.
Right.
The district facilities plan recommendation. I voted against that when the committee adopted it, so I'm going to vote against it again.
Yes, ma'am.
That's right, no problem.
We understand.
I agree with everything else on there.
Motion carries. And now we're down to action items and, uh, approval of 2021 COVID-19 reopening plan. That is changing to the A B schedule?
So for the audience, uh, this plan you can find on the Harden County Schools website. You can find it on our social media accounts. It has been out for the entire month. The change that we need to let people know is that we have gone to an A B schedule and what that means is, uh, we have divided the students in half and it worked out perfectly. Our high schools, the feeder pattern of middle schools and the feeder pattern of elementary all separated for A through K would go on Monday and Thursday and L through Z would go on Tuesday and Friday. Now, if there was a family that had two different last names in that household, um, they would, the school would notice that and put them on the oldest person's schedule first. And then, of course, if the families, um, we realize some families were not comfortable with their sixth grader being home with their eighth grader. They do great independently, they don't do so great together, and so though, some families have called to say, can I have one child on Monday and Thursday and another one on Tuesday and Friday? So we just asked individuals to reach out to the schools about that. The other part of the reopening plan that I think is important is that lunch will be available for OLA students and that is our online learning academy. You can find out about that on, uh, our document. And it is important to know that those meals are free to students who are eligible for free lunches. Breakfast is free to everyone. Lunches, if you are a full-price student, then you will pay full price for that as well. Those who are on the A B schedule, they will also be sent home with meals on the days that they, so Monday afternoon, students could take a meal for Tuesday and Wednesday and then, um, the students on Tuesday would take one for Wednesday, Thursday.
Oh, so they don't have to come back and get it.
They do not have to come back and get it. And, uh, the Lincoln Trail Health Department, uh, we make sure our bus rides are not so long that, uh, there's a chance of it going bad. We, of course, encourage kids to make sure that food gets home and used for those days, uh, upcoming days, um, during that time. The other part of it, you will notice in there, we do have the guidelines of how we will do contact tracing and all of that, so I will, uh, when it comes to the superintendent's report, I will go over that. But the biggest thing for the board to know is that we have gone to that A B and that allows us to do social distancing. As I indicated before, our numbers were such that, um, we were not able to get our classes small enough. We had classes with 28 students at some of our schools. With this, uh, it will put the classes down at a 14, which is a much more manageable rate. If you all recall the last hearing we had, or a special board meeting, they talked about in here, the size of this room and how their, their size of their classrooms would not accommodate that. Since that time, Mr. Sutton, uh, would you please tell us the total number of students who have chosen to go to the online learning academy? While he is pulling that up, I just want, uh, people to realize that the level of patience we need them to have during this process. So from the beginning, uh, on August 3rd, we have had several more students to join the online learning academy. We are still significantly higher than other districts with students choosing in-person instruction, but if you just let us know on Friday that you were coming to the online learning academy, we have to place students in a grade with the teacher who has the space for that. So there is a lot of planning that has to go into this, uh, based on the number of students, based on the number of staff. So, um, I realize people want an answer immediately. We are a generation of now, uh, but there is a lot of planning, so I just ask for your patience with that, Mr. Sutton.
As of today, uh, on 8/20, and this does not include preschool numbers, we have about 14,383 students enrolled in our district. 3,496 had requested the online academy. So 3,496 on the OLA, that means in-person 10,887. Now, you're going to ask, what percent does this put us at for the online academy? It's 24.31%. Now, today alone, today alone, we had this example in one of our middle schools, they had 16 more kids to request the online academy today. So while we're working, it's kind of like trying to hit a moving target. While you're adding people to the online academy, you're having to create schedules, you're trying to hire teachers. The same point, that's what we were focused on today, was hiring more teachers to the online academy, both elementary school and middle school. So, uh, we, we feel like we have a good product if we can just get the communication out. The high school online academies are taking place within the high schools. I think if you could ask them if we'd go back and do it again, we probably would have kept the middle school online academy within the schools. I'm not sure that would have been best for elementary schools, but, uh, but we're all where we are. I think we have, uh, buy-in from all the principals, we have support, the teachers are working hard, they're working together. I think it's just a matter of us getting our student-teacher ratio down by getting some more, uh, teachers involved. And we've moved some more teachers out of the schools today into the academy and the teachers have been very receptive when we needed them to do so, so we're, we're ready to go. I mean, we really are.
What do you mean doing the online academy in the school?
Well, with the high schools, we, with the elementary and middle, we were able to actually take teachers assigned to those schools and pull them out of the schools and teach kids across the district.
Okay.
And it, it worked. You're going to say, why does it not work for a high school? We started taking teachers out of a high school, it, it, when kids needed AP, dual credit, certain electives, graduation requirements, you couldn't let certain schools start pulling teachers out and still be able to meet all the needs of the students. It's been a challenge even doing it within their own school, making sure kids that are sitting at home get an AP course or dual credit course. And we're still talking constantly about how we can make that happen for kids and may only have, you said, give me an example, maybe four kids that are in the online academy that need a ROTC course. That's very hard to do online. That's a very active course you have to be present for on motion. So, but we're, we're working and looking at options for that.
I believe also we had it just at Ronnieville Elementary today, eight students who were on the online learning academy and they now want to come back to school.
They do.
So to place those students from online to a school is difficult.
How long will we continue to make those changes?
I think, I think we, being with the situation we're in, we have to allow every family the opportunity to feel safe and get the education they feel like they need in, in the situation we're in. So we're offering that to every family and I'm hoping by Monday, when we get into school things, we're going to level off. The 10,800 kids that have chosen to be in school, we're going to have a great day because you got to realize, only half those kids are going to be there on a A B schedule. So our social distancing, our safety procedures, uh, our masks, our, uh, you know, our taking temperatures, it's, it's all going to come together and...
Now, let's say a family elects initially to do in-person, but they change their mind. When will they be able to go to the online academy?
We're asking them to do it at the cut points for elementary and middle at the end of the nine weeks, for high schools at the end of the trimester. And we're asking, we're, we're talking to parents every day, we're taking about 40 calls a day apiece. So we're kind of seeing on average.
Sure.
Mr. Thomas, myself, Brandy, and we're just asking, be patient, give it a little bit of time. You know, we, we, we know that we just have to be patient and give something time to work. It's not going to happen great the first day, but it's going to be great after a few weeks, like anything else, it takes time.
I've had several questions...
And we've never done this before.
I've had several questions about attendance, how we're going to take attendance.
A lot of it's going to be based on participation in the online academy. Every, every day a kid is supposed to, that's one thing good about the online academy is it's based on the school day. Last year, non-traditional instruction, you could have slept till noon and got up and had your assignments waiting for you.
Wouldn't that have been perfect?
Well, it would have been great for a kid, but now, uh, but now we're saying, you've got to be online at 8 o'clock, ready to, uh, sign for your link for your first period class and meet with that teacher and even on your off days, you're going to be expected to, uh, come in for a morning meeting, get some reminders and that gets better.
Well, they have to log in for...
They do.
They have to log in so that we'll have a record of it.
Exactly, and, and work completion shows participation.
Yeah, yeah.
I like that. I mean, I, I just feel like that, that student is required to be there and that's great. The N T I that we're, you said, get up and do their work whenever they want to, that just don't, that's not getting it.
It works for some.
A good, good student.
Now, I read or heard somewhere that they're recommending now that masks be required for as young as two years old, is that right?
It depends on whose recommendation, but...
Right. What the CDC came out with said from zero to two, it's really not, um, practical and mainly because of strangulation.
Yeah.
It wouldn't take, it's not safe. However, for age three on, uh, they are recommending a mask.
So we're requiring our three-year-olds to wear masks too?
No, we're not in our preschool program, but we are with kindergarten students.
Okay.
We noticed that in most families, when they are going out to the stores and public places, the kids are already wearing the mask. We had a lot of parents saying, I want my child to wear a mask, so, uh, we included kindergarten in that.
Do we still just have 70 subs signed up?
Uh, no, ma'am, I believe we have increased our subs, uh, believe it or not, this, uh, board meeting, the last one, um, I got home that night and had three retired teachers, one retired administrator, two retired administrators today, uh, let us know they would be happy to come back and sub for us and so...
Good, good. We need to...
Mr., I think Mike said we're about at 90, if I'm understanding. Uh, some of them may wind up helping out in other areas, but I think 90, right around 90.
Well, that's a significant improvement.
That's good.
So we're down in numbers totally on, on students this year?
I don't know, I think with the 14,300, you were to add your preschool to that, that might put us somewhere around 15,000, John, pretty close. I think we're staying pretty much on par.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's without preschool.
Yeah, without preschool, it's 14,300, but with the preschool, I think we're right where we normally would be.
Do we still have 23 teaching vacancies? Uh, no.
I think we're down to two, if my, and my count is two.
Mr. Sutton, I have a question about the number of distinct courses offered in the online academy. When, when you presented this the first time, uh, and described the division between, uh, online academy and, and in-person, just, just a nearly shocking number was 221 distinct classes you had to offer to high schools, to high school students and I, you know, that's without the others. Well, is, is it a similar number now? Has that grown some or...
The high school level itself?
Uh-huh.
No, it's still the same.
Still 221?
Yeah, yeah, we're still at the same overall offering. That's kind of what we, once we decided to put it back in the schools, we looked at how many course, uh, sections we were going to have and how many course offerings that stayed right at the same number.
221.
We didn't have to add or take away per se. It was just a matter of that's what we could offer with the teachers we had.
That is, I, I just want to say, that is, that's an astounding curriculum. That is just amazing, a course offering. That's, and, and I'm pleased and impressed you're able to offer that.
But you have to understand, like Ms. Slavin was saying, yes, they won her presentation, she visited a school district, can't remember which one, but they offered 12 pathways in their district, which is excellent. We offer now 36.
Yeah.
So when you have that many opportunities for kids, uh, that's, that, that opens up a lot of avenues for different courses they can take. And now with our, I can't wait to start talking about our, our I L P app we're doing through Tassel. Uh, our middle school teachers at each, uh, middle school got training two days ago with Ms. Slavin on a career exploration course at every middle school. Every sixth, seventh, eighth grader will be completing the app. It's going to lead right into high school. It's going to do everything from calculate their keys, money. It's gone to actually integrate with CERT, so when their practice ACT scores, we're going to write into their app right there on their phone. Tassel has actually, the state actually contracted with Tassel for all their area technical centers on their walkthrough plan. They actually have a walkthrough plan. The state is still impressed with what Tassel's doing. I'm glad we were ahead of the state. They're still impressed with what Tassel's doing. They purchased the walkthrough instrument. JTA is, is actually piloting the walkthrough instrument this year at their own cost. We did not pay for that, we're only paying for the, the I L P individual learning plan app. So we're, we're on the cutting edge on that too and, uh, we, we jumped on board on that pretty early and some people kind of questioned that thing, but I think once people see what this can do, the tasks the kids are going to do every Tuesday or Tassel Tuesdays in middle school, I can't wait to show you that as the year goes on. And Ms. Slavin has been, has been great. So there's going to be so many things I think we're doing that's great. They're going to get overshadowed here for a while because of this.
Yeah.
But we can't take our eye off the kids, we can't take our eye off instruction, we can't take our eye off what's most important and whether they're sitting at home in online academy or whether they're with us, we're going to be getting those things out to them as well. They're going to have the same opportunities to get that app started and we've got to keep thinking about ways to communicate. That's going to be our biggest challenge, I think, this year.
Great.
So a lot, a lot of great things though. I could, I could talk forever about it, but we're, we just want to get started.
Glad you're excited.
Yeah, I'm excited. I get excited talking about it, but we just got to get started next week. It's going to be a great week.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I move that we approve the, uh, 2020, 2021 COVID-19 reopening plan.
And I'll second. Have a motion and a second to approve the reopening plan. All favors, second by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? Kay?
I'm on a roll.
She's on a roll tonight. All right, we had, uh, well, no. Motion carries. And, uh, now we're considering a resolution authorizing a contract lease and option with the Harden County School District Finance Corporation. And, uh, so at this time, I'll recess the regular meeting and call to order the Harden County School District Finance Corporation Special Meeting. Have a motion and a second to approve. All favors, second by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Hello, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks for accommodating me and the, uh, inability for our group to travel right now, we're, um, it's where we are, but I wanted to bring to you all's attention the, um, refunding opportunity. I don't know if John's had a chance to give you all much of that data on it, but I just wanted to review with you all the opportunity to, um, issue new bonds in advance of the call date on those 2013 bonds. I mean, if we can do it successfully, we can save quite a bit of money. I have my file up here. I think it's, um, what we're looking at is, it's roughly saving about, if we can pull it off, about $140,000 per year in savings or, um, a gross savings net of all costs of a million eight. And, um, what we're doing is issuing taxable bonds in advance of the call date. You all may remember, it's been a couple of years since we've done this with, as a board, but, uh, we, in the past, would, uh, if it's transferred low enough, would do what we call an adventure funding, that's exactly the same thing here. So, um, we have everything teed up, we have, um, all documents before the board and are, I'm happy answering questions you all have, but with your all's approval tonight, we can, uh, John, uh, we can move forward and get this thing, try to get it to market, so...
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, I, I don't need a lot of discussion on that, we understand what it means.
Anytime we can save that kind of money, I'm all for it.
If, if I could interject just one comment, Chip, could you talk a little bit about the negative arbitrage? negative arbitrage? Am I using the right term?
You are, yeah. So this is an important point to consider. So of course, the savings looks nice, $140,000 off per year, $1.8 million net of all costs. We're lowering interest rate from, you know, in the, in the three and a half range, wherever it is, down to 1.75. So it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
But as John points out, we're going to be issuing debt today that's going to sit there for a couple of years and really not do anything until the prior bonds, the 2013 bonds are callable in 2023. So that creates what's called negative arbitrage, because we're issuing debt today, it's not doing anything, paying interest on it, then it gets used. And all that's factored in, and that $1.8 million number of debt of that negative arbitrage. But let's see, the negative arbitrage that we're currently looking at is about, it's almost $600,000. So what does that mean? What it means is that if we waited, we just said, hey, you know what, this looks good, but I don't think interest rates are going to go anywhere. Let's wait until 2023 and then issue tax exempt bonds that can be used right away, because the bonds will be immediately called on 2023. Then we would have more savings. We wouldn't be issuing debt now and paying interest on it and having it not be used. And if we could do that, instead of $1.8 million, it'd be $3 million of savings, net of all costs, which is about $280,000 per year. So it's almost double the savings that you can get now if you're going to taxable. So this is the proverbial bird in the hand, tree in the bush kind of question. You know, we know where the market is today. It can, if we can get it done, it'll do about 100, at least 140,000 dollars of savings. But if we wait and interest rates don't change, then we can, we can almost double that. With the caveat being, we've got to wait two years and hope the rates don't change. We ran some sensitivity analysis, see how much everyone we have in interest rates to go up. And between now, October 2020, and May 2023, when we can, when we will be able to currently refinance those bonds, we have, we have a ceiling room of about 100 basis points, which is 1%. So if the prevailing interest rate is 1.75%, we can, we can let rates go up to 2.75% and then we're at the same place as we are today. That makes sense.
So we could suffer some, we could wait, suffer some movement, and then get in on that movement to avoid the situation getting worse. And the headroom we have, as you say, is 100 basis points. So we would know, if we did decide not to do this immediately, we'd have the time it takes to move 100, a full percentage, right?
If, I'm going to just make sure I heard you correctly. If, if, if we decide to wait, we have, we have interest rates can go up 100 basis points before you'll start wishing that you got it done now.
Right.
Yep.
So what I, what I hear you saying is that we can save $140,000 a year now guaranteed, or we can take a chance and wait two years and hope the interest rates don't go up more than 1%?
Correct.
Chip, if I could interject, is there a third option, Chip? Can we approve the refunding today and then the board give power to the superintendent via your guidance that, you know, as long as interest rates stay around 1.75, we're going to let it ride. But if we feel like it's going to go up, pull the trigger sometime between now and two years from now?
Correct.
So that's an option, too?
So that, that's what we're paying into it, and we're going to pay the little interest that we're going to have to pay on our money, right?
No, that's not my understanding. So we would pay nothing now. We would just approve the refunding so that we don't have to go through this process again, but empower the superintendent with guidance from Chip at some point in the future to recommend we pull the trigger. Now, that may mean we have to have a special call board meeting to finalize everything. But in my mind, that might be the best of both worlds. We, we don't lose that opportunity to go ahead and get the bird in the hand.
I think that's what we did last time. We waited a few. I think we've, yeah, I think we've done that before, haven't we?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So which option do you like, Chip?
Oh, that's not fair.
[laughing]
You know, it's, this is, this is the way I characterize it. Fortunately, Harden County's in great financial shape. It's, it has, has a very good tax base and it does a great job managing its finances. It does a great job handing out its borrowings for new money projects. It's in really good fiscal shape. It's not a district, per se, that is desperate for savings. So I will say, this adventure funding, I was going to look to see, I could see if I could share my screen real quick. Let me see if this works. Share content. And I want to share the screen here. Are you able to see my screen?
It's, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's go back here. Here's the first page. Can you see right here on the today option, the world I was describing, $140,000 per year for a grand total of 1.8? And then over on the side, it says wait?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. That's, that's the difference, okay? So numbers wise, it's a no-brainer. It looks, makes total perfect sense to wait. So I'm going to slip over, slip over to the second page here. And this is sensitivity analysis, because, because basically you're asking me, do I think interest rates will change for the worse? And we will wish we have done this thing.
Right.
And this is a sensitivity analysis we use when we work with I O P, body essence kind of issues, using for complicated versions and that kind of thing. If we did it today, here's your 1.8 million savings. Here's the present value number, net of all costs, and it's 12%. So the 12, it's, it's, you know, usually the threshold is 5%. We should see 5% is a value savings of the amount that we're refinancing. It exceeds that amount quite a bit. Here's the negative arbitrage that John referenced. So here's just, I won't go through the details of each one of them. But these are three different ways to help us consider how much better can get if we wait versus, you know, trying to measure, it's a lot of savings felt to the size of negative arbitrage. So this cheap, you see the check marks on each one, we ran the math. Well, basically, this one passed the test. If you, you'd be perfectly justified to pull the trigger now. You know, when you're asking me, what is 100 basis points ceiling between now and 2023? I'd say probably not much. So on that hand, I'm saying it passes all the tests. It makes sense to go ahead and get the board approval tonight and put it out to bid as soon as possible. On the other hand, this is where I'll need your all's input. Again, I'll go back to Harden County's in really good financial shape. So it's, you know, the board and the administration do a great job keeping Harden County in good fiscal shape. If you miss out on your refinancing opportunity, it won't hurt you all. And that's the risk, is that, okay, let's put this on pause. Let's wait for approval tonight, but let's not sell bonds today. Let's wait a little bit. The risk is that interest rates rise too quickly and we can't pull the trigger. I don't think that it will hurt Harden County schools if it misses this refinancing opportunities. That's, so that's how I feel about it. I think if you guys have a better feel in terms of, well, we know that 140 is precious, let's go ahead and break the water can, I'll take the bird in the hand approach, then I support that. As you say, we feel good about our budget. We feel good about how we are given, all things considered, and we're willing to ride this out. And if anything attached to the next new money bond issue here, I completely support that as well. Long answer, if I'm giving you answers.
We can afford to take the risk, is what you're saying to us.
Yes, I think you all can. Do I think that's the, do I think we will all be kicking ourselves in three months, six months, possibly?
We'd be safe.
Possibly. But, you know, I got to go, I think we need to go with select comfort with each other on this. And, you know, because just as, just as I say that, we could be hacked, rated six months, twenty years.
So John, what, what do you feel?
That's a good question. And I'm just like Chip, I'm, here goes my invasive, talking out of both sides of my mouth. I mean, if it were my money, I would probably definitely wait. I would, you know, do I think interest rates are going to dramatically increase, especially in the next six months? John Stith personally doesn't think so. Now, after six months, I'm not as, I'm not as confident that this isn't my money. And $140,000 a year is a lot of money. So I can support either, either decision. But if it were, if it were my money, I think I would try to approve it tonight, and then I would wait. And as rates start to rise, I'd be calling Chip relatively quickly.
So am I right that, that the first option gives us 1.8 million more in our bonding capacity?
Well, it'd be, your bonding capacity would probably increase a little bit more than the 1.8. I mean, yeah, if, the answer is yes, at least that, that's correct. At least that.
So the other one, the, the other option would be more than that, though?
If it worked out.
If it works out.
It would be supposed to pre-made. I was just pulling up the resolution, but yeah, that's the, don't let me stop your train of thought. Any refinancing is safe, makes me increase your bonding capacity. And today, we know it'd be about, you know, 1.8 million savings, probably bonding capacity would improve. Could be five, 10 million, really.
Really?
Wow.
You, to, to be fair, you, you all, the way we've structured the debt over the last 10, 15 years, Harden County is very aggressive in how it pays back its debt. You know, you can thank yourselves for decisions made five, six years ago, three years ago, about how quickly you all paid back debt, because your bonding capacity is going to be a shame. So, you know, and only, I guess that puts a chip in favor of waiting. We're in good financial shape. It's really collectively a gut of where you think rates are going.
Yeah.
I think I'm leaning toward John Stith's recommendation over here with the.
What's that, are we firing one of the others?
Now they make the money up somehow, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Was that a recommendation? Was that a motion?
I don't, yeah, I guess I'll make a motion.
I'll second that, then.
Okay.
So we put it in place, and we do watchful waiting?
Let John do the watchful waiting. And Chip has to watch the interest. We all have to watch the interest rates to make sure we catch it just right.
And we may be kicking ourselves, but we're not hurting, even if that happens.
We've got some wiggle room to break even. That's, that's the nice thing. We can, we can go up a whole, you know, percentage point, still be where we're at.
By break even, you mean that, that 1.8 million?
Right, right.
So it's ahead. The break even is not losing out on that opportunity.
Correct. I don't want to, we got Chip on the line, he's the expert, but that, that's my understanding, right, Chip?
Yeah, so that, to be clear, like if rates went up 100 basis points tomorrow, and you said, hey, we're at our ceiling, let's go ahead and pull the trigger, I tell you, it doesn't work at all.
Yeah.
It means that it can't be more than 100 basis points higher than it is now come May 2023. That's what that means.
Right.
Yep. But if you kick yourself, even if the things improve, it's not going to hurt the district at all, really long. You know, we'll keep watching this. There's going to be, we have clients that are going to pull the trigger on it, in and out of the K-12 space. So, you know, this is going to be more and more common. So, you know, we've been through this before as a group, so we'll just keep watching. You know, our suggestion would be to approve the resolution tonight. And that's just, all that related does is kind of save you all a conversation later and give the administration and us the clearance to, you know, pull the trigger when it makes sense.
I think that's where we are.
Yes. I think you have done an excellent job of keeping on top of our account and making sure we get all the savings we need. So I think we can trust you on this one, too.
Yeah, so let's take that resolution and go with that.
All right. First, I, Chip?
Chip, I think, are they ready, are you ready to, do we have to read the resolution?
Yeah, it would be good for us to kind of, and I can read this resolution.
Do we have to vote on it first, or does he read it?
I think that's not the first. It does. Thank you.
We're letting him do it.
I'll let Chip do it.
Yes, sir.
Chip, where'd you go?
There he is. There's the resolution.
I think we're buffering. Chip, are you still there?
All right, we've lost him.
You hear me, John?
I can now. We were buffering. Sorry. Go ahead.
That's okay. Would you like me to read the summary and then you all can consider that on resolution? And then we'll go to the Fans Corporation.
That sounds good.
Okay. Resolution of the Board of Education of the Harden County Kentucky School District. Switich initiated the refinancing process in order to refund retired certain outstanding school building revenue bonds originally issued to finance the project, authorizing and improving the execution of the leasing deal with the Harden County School District Finance Corporation, any further necessary instruments, and improving the plan of refinancing the said project general.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
This resolution is for the Fans Corporation. I'll read the summary. I think it is. It's a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Harden County School District Finance Corporation, providing for the issuance of $15,70,000 principal amount, which may be increased by an amount of $1,500,000 or decreased by an amount determined by corporations being investors in the corporation. School billing, refunding revenue bonds, series of 2020 dated or dated issuance of the funding bond. There's no carries in this. In accordance with sections 162.20, 162.300, 162.55, 58.18, of the senior vast statutes, for the purpose of retiring prior to their respective maturity certain outstanding Harden County School District Finance Corporation school billing revenue bonds, series of 2013 dated, August 2013, the prior issue, through deposit being investment in escrow of the proceeds of the refunding bonds, providing payment of principal of an interest on all bonds of said prior issue by redemption, advancing maturity, providing for the creation of certain funds to affect the defeasance, defeasance, defeasement of the rights of the owners of certain of the funds of the prior issue, and transfer to certain routes of certain bonds, providing for the payment of separate funding bonds and interest error on, providing for the rights of the registered owners of separate funding bonds, and enforcement thereof, only right for advertised, covered, funded, sales, separate funding bonds.
Do you need a motion now?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to accept.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to accept the resolution. All in favor, say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Very good. That was one sentence. I'm going to make a record actually, turn to a better job.
Chip, you need to, Chip, you need to thank a teacher for teaching you to read.
Well, I appreciate everyone. I'm glad everybody's doing well. And I'm wishing you guys a great school year. Looking forward to seeing you guys again soon. John, thanks for everything you do. Appreciate working with you. You make it easy on us. We'll just try not to be in touch with you, John, and keep you apprised where we stand, and we'll go from there.
Yeah, we'll stay in close contact.
All right. Thanks, Tracy. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Now we need to adjourn the District Finance Corporation Special Meeting.
We are. And we're reconvening the Harden County Board of Education regular meeting.
Okay.
You can do that, can't you? You don't have to have a motion or anything.
And that brings us to new business. Anyone have any new business?
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
All right, Superintendent's Report.
Awesome. I'll start with the other stuff first. We are on Monday. We are on Monday, August 24th, starting the school year unlike any other school years that we have ever had and hopefully no other school year will be like this again. So, I want to go over some things with our families and our community members who may be watching of where the board's decision comes from. We have throughout the process said that we would look at the medical numbers, that we would stay away from any such political things, but we would look at the numbers. So, I want to share with you, each night when I go home, I go to two sites. And I'll move out of the way, Gina, so hopefully you can see this. This is the local Lincoln Trail Health Department site right here. And if you will, please go, John, to that first, that top one right there and just click. It takes you to this and if you scroll down, keep going, please. Keep going, please. So, this right here is our local health department. So, you'll see today that it says a total of 18 new cases. This is not for Harden County. This is for the Lincoln Trail Health Department area and that is made up of six counties. So, you can see that, but if you will click over there on the side, it is difficult for people to see, you can change Lincoln Trail Health Department to Harden County. You can then choose the ages of what numbers you want to see. So, what I go home and do because of the school age children that we have and the staff that we have in Harden County, I go down and I choose five to nine, 10 to 19, 20 to 29, 30 to 39, 40 to 49, and 50 to 59. The reason why I do those numbers is that makes up the majority of the staff in Harden County, the majority. We do have exceptions to where we do have some that are older than that in our district, but for the majority, this fits into that. So, what you can see is currently, according to the Lincoln Trail Health Department today, we have three new cases in those age ranges. Out of that, we have one that is hospitalized. We have 66 who are in home isolation and we have 576 that have recovered in one death. So, I want people to realize this is where we receive our information. John, if you would please go back up to the top, let's stop right there and go Kentucky COVID-19. And if you would scroll down, keep scrolling, and then if you would go to COVID-19 daily reports. So, on this report, it takes you through all of the numbers over the days that right here, this is just today with our three new cases. You will look to see that out of those cases Harden County makes up, and this is total cases by county, and Harden County is 1.92% of that entirety of those numbers. Jefferson County makes up 24.15%. If you will scroll down, this is total cases. If you will scroll down, this is COVID new cases and you will see where Harden County is further down the line and that is 1.79 of the new cases. This is where we receive our information from. Mr. Stith, I don't know if you're in your email. Casey sent you a link.
Do this, Frank, email John. It should be ready. Open it, okay?
Was that the FIPR?
And in fairness, Andrew, I also pull up the News Enterprise.
The FIPR, Ms. Polly?
Yes, right there.
It's from you, Mrs. Morgan?
Yes. And if you would, if you look at these numbers right here, I want to point out that the highest number, if you will look, this is July 30th, but if you will look also on August the 5th, and I'm sorry, this is not as easy to look at. Oh, there you go, John, thank you. On August the 5th, there were nine cases since August the 5th, 4, 3, 1, 2, 5, 2, 2, 3, 2. And this is the numbers for the age range of five to 18. So, if you take an average of those, you will see that there is, if you'll go back up a little bit, John, you can see the 2, 1, 2, 4, 1, 1. So, when you take one and you double it to two, you have doubled it 100%, but you're gone up by one case. So, John, if you will scroll on down. Is there a, did we do a...
Should be a second tab.
There should be a second tab, John. Okay, this is the age range of adults with these numbers right here. And so, again, if you look at this for the age range, you have a half point on two days, 7, 10, 8, 8, 3, 1, 2, 2. And then today, we know the numbers are three. So, I want people to know, these are the numbers that we are looking at and the numbers that we are sharing to make decisions based on COVID Kentucky KY and the Lincoln Trail Health Department. So, when you are looking for numbers, I encourage you to go to these two sites to get your information. All agencies in Kentucky, hospitals, Care First, all of those are mandated to report the numbers to these sites. So, again, I want to encourage you to do that. The other two things I want you to know is we are prepared in Harden County if we were to have a COVID case. We have two spreadsheets and I'll pass these out to you all so that we know exactly what's going to happen if a student comes in with a temperature, if a staff member comes in with a temperature greater than 100.4. We have a chart that says this is exactly how this will be handled each and every day. Will they go, need to go and see a physician? Just because you have a fever does not automatically mean that you have COVID. There are other issues out there and we would ask that those families take that student to a physician, their primary care physician, the primary care physician that knows them very well would be our recommendation. However, it is up to a parent to make that decision. What they do have to do is come back to the school fever-free the next day without medication. So, I want families to know that if there is a case of COVID, we will let you know that information. The Lincoln Trail Health Department will be the person who contacts an immediate person who is sitting around. So, for example, in the boardroom this evening, if Mr. Seago was sitting there and he tested positive, the Lincoln Trail Health Department most certainly is going to contact Mr. Emery to let him know that he was a close contact. However, Mr. Wright is over here at least 10 foot away wearing a mask, the Lincoln Trail Health Department would not consider that a contact, a close contact. The other part of that is a 10-minute span that they are together. This is why we are mandating masks. This is why we have gone to an A-B schedule to separate our students and to have greater social distancing in our classrooms. So, I want people to understand that if and when we have a positive case, the school will be notified through a one call and if it specifically involves your child, you would receive a phone call from the Lincoln Trail Health Department, not the school, because that is a medical situation. So, I just want to stress that we are prepared for that. We also need the parent, you will be receiving a letter in your home, hopefully tomorrow or Saturday, that says, hey, if your child has these issues and they are uncommon for your child, one of them is a new rash. If your child has eczema and has a rash often, this may not be something you need to worry about, but if your child has never experienced a rash, then this is something you need to be concerned about and you need to see your physician as such. So, if they are running a fever, so we need you to pay attention to that. The other part is we ask for our family's support in helping us stay healthy. When you're going out in public, please wear the mask, please abide by the CDC guidelines. That will help us with a successful school year. In conclusion, I just want to say that I have been, I think the word would be inspired. I think the word would be awestruck by the amount of work that has happened in this district over the past several months. We have teachers who are doing the online learning academy, who have never done that before, and they have worked endless hours to make that a success. We have teachers preparing their classrooms, making sure desks are so many feet apart to allow for social distancing, revamping lessons of what it will look like to allow children to share. They have truly been amazing. We have principals who have made sure all the signage in their school is up, you know, stay six foot apart. Here's a hand sanitizing station, just amazing. Mr. Quarter in our Transportation Department, bless their hearts, they have routed and rerouted the number of routes. Every time we have a student to say, hey, I'm coming back, we have to find a new, add them to that transportation list. You have Child Nutrition with Josie, making sure, number one, our kids were fed throughout the summer. They were supposed to stop August 1st. They continued for an additional two weeks and we greatly appreciate their hard work. Buildings and grounds, Mr. Stucker and his crew, they have ordered our Plexiglas to have at our front offices. They have taken out desks, they've taken out tables, they're removing a trailer. They have just been phenomenal in getting all of our supplies out to the schools that they need. Ms. Ryan and the TV production crew, they have streamed all of our board meetings. They have done YouTube videos, YouTube Live, so that parents could send in questions and have us to answer those. John Wright has done public relations information, so families stay on top of that. Lisa Martin at the Resource Center, she has saved us, I would guess, probably $100,000. She has created all of our signage throughout our buildings to make sure that we have the six foot apart. Not only did she create those, she did it with a little Trojan, a little bulldog and Bruin. And so, every school has their own color of that. So, it is just really amazing. And then we have Mr. Stith and Mr. Sutton, who have worked endlessly with all of these departments to make these great things happen throughout this district. So, to say that I am inspired, it is just amazing to see what an incredible group of people can do in this district. And Ms. Polly back there might need the Nobel Prize because she has put up with me each day along with Shallow and so just appreciate all the hard work and John for keeping us, our families informed and making sure our reopening plan is updated. So, it is going to be a great school year and again, I just can't thank the people enough for all of their hard work and sleepless nights and lots of people working hard to make this a success.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to know how much we spent getting our schools ready for COVID-19 with the Plexiglas and all that stuff.
We can't tell yet, can we?
Secondly, I'd like to know how testing, talk to me about how we're going to handle testing.
You mean like testing for COVID?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. First off, the price that we are paying for all of this, we are coding everything that comes through. So, you got to know that back in January, we were experiencing flu, okay? So, we, again, I was looking at numbers each day to see what percentage of kids were coming. We were having, we were down around 90% flu rate at that...
In attendance?
90% in attendance. So, John had already ordered sanitizer. He had already ordered rags, spray bottles and that. We are allowed to go back to that date and count that because that was just the beginning of this process. So, from there, we have coded everything that we have purchased.
So, we're going to be reimbursed for this?
We would be able to use Esser funds. We would be able to use Gears funds and FEMA funds, yes.
Oh, okay.
So, we are tracking every bit of that. Can I tell you tonight what that amount is?
No, I didn't, I didn't expect that.
Right. The COVID test, we are very fortunate that we have Cumberland Health and Cumberland Health will have a rapid machine. And when we spoke to the Lincoln Trail Health Department, they said there is one type of rapid test and it's called Sofia. We immediately called Ibi with Cumberland Health and said, what kind of test do you have? She said, we have Sofia.
Yes.
So, it is the one rapid test that is accepted. There are other kinds out there, but they are not as legitimate results. So, within Harden County, we will be able to have a test result within 15 minutes. Now, we will not have a machine in each of our schools. So, it will either be at John Harden because we have a nurse practitioner's office there, or it may be here at central office in our nurse coordinator's office. So, by the time they drive it here, you know, it may be an hour depending on if you have Creekside, it'd be a little bit further. Staff members are eligible to take those tests as well. They can do a baseline. I had a teacher to say, can I do a test on Monday morning to make sure I'm clear? If you want to do one this coming Monday morning, they're welcome to do that. So, if a student comes in with a fever, they would have that option. But again, we also know there's other things out there that happen, strep throat, flu, those type things. So, again, we will ask parents, go take your child to a primary care physician, but...
Or they don't show any symptoms at all?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
So, but what we have found out...
And we're not going to try to test all kids to get those?
No, ma'am.
So, we're just going to take a chance on those?
Well, we're asking our families to be very vigilant. Here's the signs of what you need to look for. Please refrain from going to high-impact areas that are dangerous, you know? I'll, I'll be honest, I may have called Mr. Wise the night that I saw the carnival at Town Mall. I may have had a elevated blood pressure that evening.
I think you did.
I think I did.
I thought you were riding one of the rides when you called me.
I can assure you, I was not. I was paying attention to the lines and if they were following the procedures of mask and if they were cleaning the chains on the swings each time.
They had a carnival at the mall?
Yes.
Oh, my goodness.
There was actually a really good article about it.
Yes.
Thought I should mention it.
And so, again, we are doing everything in our power to open safely. We just need the community support in making that happen as well.
Well, I'd like to encourage you to consider testing all students initially. I think that's the only way we can be sure.
Can we test without parents' permission?
No, we will have to have parents' permission and even, even before we have a student to see a nurse practitioner in our district, we make a call to that family. Because again, a lot of families want to go to their primary care physician because that's someone who knows their family and knows, is that a new rash? Is that an old rash? So, again, we encourage, encourage that. So, that is it.
I think the plan sounds excellent and I hope that we're a model instead of a failure. I mean, you know, if somewhere we have to move forward and I think we've tried to quit kicking the can down the road and be responsible also and I just, like Ms. Morgan said, if the parents will just take their side of responsibility...
But they won't.
Well, we hope they will.
We have a great community.
We do. And we've had a lot of people step forward that volunteered for things and offered funds for things and...
And we're still looking for volunteers.
Yeah, yes, we are. And, you know, I realize that a lot of people are at risk, but of course, healthcare workers, first responders, police... first responders, police, everybody has a risk. I feel sorry for the people who needs check, and they've worked at Kroger, the convenience store, the gas store, the truck drivers on the road that hadn't had meals where they could go in and sit down and eat a nice meal for months now. And so everybody's trying to do their job and be responsible, and we're just a big spoke in that wheel. We need to do the same thing and hopefully everything will work.
And we're preparing for such.
All right. We don't need an executive session tonight.
No, sir.
And August the 24th, 25th, first day of school.
And we will be releasing one hour early in elementary schools on both Monday and Tuesday, with the exception of Lakewood Elementary.
Labor Day, offices are closed and don't let everybody go on vacation and gather up somewhere, so that.
Yes.
And we're down to a motion.
Would you like to adjourn? I make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say five saying aye.
Aye.
Uh-oh, aye, aye.
Motion carries. Everyone have a safe trip home.